I'd like to call the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee to order. Let the men take their -- please call the roll.
Alderman Ames, here. Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Kuriali.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sismarzki, not here. Alderman Woods.
Here. Declare a quorum. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October 13th, 2020. So move.
Tim Ove.
Second.
2022. Any questions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is a report and recommendation. 372 North Wooddale Road, special use for multiple units dwelling building, planned unit development, combined concept and final development plan, site plan review and lot consolidation. And that was a lot to say. Who's taking this? Ms. Springer?
I am.
All right. I'm excited.
Thank you, Chairman Woods. So we have joined the developer presentation and the staff presentation this evening into a single PowerPoint. I'm going to turn it over to Brad Friedman of the Linmark Group. He's going to do the first several slides and then I'll follow up at the end with the village staff perspective.
Good evening. It's good to see everybody again. I know that most of you have been through the song and dance and you know who I am. But for anyone who is new or watching, I'm going to go through a quick presentation to kind of reintroduce myself, the company and the project. As everybody knows, we are here tonight to talk about 372 North Wooddale. We're trying to get PUD approval for a 176 luxury multifamily building. My name is Brad Friedman. I'm with the Linmark Group. As you know, the Linmark Group has been around for over 65 years. We have developed and constructed more than 1.3 billion in real estate in 19 different states. We've done multifamily, hospitality, retail and office. Most of you, I think, are familiar with the Wheeling Town Center. That was a recent project that was completed. That's the photo below where we have a 300-unit luxury apartment building and about 100,000 square feet of retail that surrounds this pedestrian plaza. Tonight, we're here to talk about the subject property, 372 North Wooddale. Everybody is familiar with it. It's right next door, backs up to the park district, the water park, and has a lot of exposure on Wooddale, so I know how important this project is for the community. Just a couple of quick points about the project. We're looking at about 4.6 acres of land. We are proposing a five-story apartment building with a courtyard, about 176 luxury rentals. The unit mix will be about 31 studios, 77 one-bedroom, one-bath units and 68 two-bedroom, two-bath units. We are going to have a full-blown amenity package and a courtyard with a pool. And we are now at about 263 open surface parking spaces. This is a perspective rendering of the building. I do believe some of you have seen this before. This is what my architects put together. I'm very happy with the way that this has come out. We have a lot of a mix of materials and colors, which I think works well for some of these larger buildings. And we have protruding balconies, so every unit will have a balcony or ground floor outdoor patio space. Here is the site plan and...
It's a little green line.
The green guy? Okay. Sorry about that, folks. So just to go over real quickly, so we've got our main entrance over here and we've got a drop-off area for Uber, DoorDash. And then we've got a back-of-house area over here for deliveries, move-ins, trash pickup. We have nice circulation all the way around, enough for fire truck turning radius. We have access points located throughout the building, so wherever you park, you're never too far from entering the building. And then we have some additional parking over here and the courtyard with the pool in the center. Here's a closer look at the ground floor plan. As I was mentioning, the main entrance is going to be right here. We'll have the lobby, the leasing center, the management office. That'll lead into the other amenities, which will include a clubroom and a fitness area, a yoga studio, a conference room, lots of open workspace. And then that will lead into the courtyard here where we will have a pool, lots of lounge seating, some grill stations, some fire pit features. And as I mentioned, back of the house, loading trash over in here and then entrances here. So again, talking about the amenities, as I had mentioned, onsite management, leasing and maintenance. A lobby with complimentary coffee and lounge seating, clubroom, party space with a kitchen to host community events. We do a lot of that at One Wheeling. We'll do like breakfast with coffee, donuts or wine and cheese after work. Or like we did a make-your-own sundae bar that was a huge hit. Fitness room, studio space, conference room and open workspace, as I had mentioned, large package room to accept all of the Amazon deliveries, a dog washing station, we're very pet-friendly. And then in the courtyard, the pool, the lounge chairs, the grill stations and the outdoor dining and patio seating. This is a typical floor plan. You could see the large two-bedroom units and then the smaller studios and the one-bedrooms and the hallway and the elevator areas. And like I said, every unit will have a protruding balcony outdoor space. Taking a look at the unit mix and some of the projected rents, studios, we're thinking are going to be about 1,400 a month. The one-bedrooms are probably going to be around 1,600 a month. We'll have a smaller two-bedroom, which we anticipate going for around 2,100 a month, a larger two-bedroom for about 2,400 a month. Here's another rendering of the building along Wooddale and what it will look like. Project timeline. So we've been working with city staff on the redevelopment agreement, which is...
Alderman Messina has a question.
Could you go back one slide, please?
Yep. Right here.
Yeah. So does that flow out onto Wooddale Road or is that commercial?
No, this is Wooddale here. This is Wooddale here. Commercial is all the way back.
Okay.
Any other question?
No.
Okay. So as I had mentioned, we've been working with city staff on the redevelopment agreement, which is like 99% complete. We are now going through the PUD process. Once we get PUD approval, it'll take us about six months to complete our construction drawings. Then we can obtain a loan commitment from our lender. It'll take us about another six months until we close on our construction loan. So we will be expecting to break ground end of 2023. It's about an 18-month construction period, so we would be looking to get our certificate of occupancy with tenants moving into the building in early 2025. Just a couple of highlights about the Wheeling Town Center and the Linmark Group. I believe most of you know this, that the Linmark Group, a family office, and we are long-term holders. We are not merchant developers. We do not build a project, stabilize it, sell it, flip it and move on. We're in it for the long haul. So that means that we put a lot of attention to detail and quality construction. Our apartment building at the Wheeling Town Center is 300 units and we are 95% occupied. We get four and a half stars on Google as the average rating. It's LEED certified, Energy Star certified, and we are now part of a solar company and we are in the process of installing solar rooftop panels on a lot of our properties. As I mentioned, we do a lot of community and resident events. And based on the demographics, for the average renter at the One Wheeling apartment building, it's clear that we have a more mature renter by choice, meaning that they want to live there, they are looking for a luxury, maintenance-free living. And I am now going to pass it over to Stacy and then obviously I'll be here all night to answer all of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. So Mr. Friedman did a great job of giving you all the... Thank you. Giving you all the development-related details, the amenities and what the proposed project will look like. I'm going to do a very quick review of kind of some of the highlights of the staff report. Of course, I'm assuming everybody read it, so I'm not going to go through it in detail. Just hit a couple of highlights. And of course, we're here and available for questions if you have any. So this project was reviewed by the Community Development Commission on Monday, October 17th, and they did vote five to one, five no votes and one yes vote on a motion to recommend approval. So that ends up coming forward to the PZB committee as a negative recommendation. They did have a couple of concerns related to trees or some questions related to trees and traffic. But overall, those are conveyed in the minutes. Overall, they were all said they were in favor generally of the project. If you have any questions about that, we can certainly talk about it. This is, shows the zoning classification for the property and it is Zone TCB, Town Center Business District. And you can see the surrounding zoning. Obviously, yeah, look at that. Can get used to this as well. So obviously, the city hall is here and the water park is here. I think everybody knows where the project is located. The future land use map, this is the long-range plan of the comprehensive plan, what the future land use was anticipated to be based on the adopted comprehensive plan. It's shown to be retail, commercial. I understand that in the past year since multifamily rental buildings are considered under the Commercial Building Code for construction and building permit review, that this is generally in compliance with what was expected. The plans were reviewed by the fire district, the engineering, the city's engineering consultant, the traffic consultant, the building consultant, public works and the planning staff. We did a number of reviews. So they submitted plans twice. They had an initial submittal and that team reviewed the plans twice and they resubmitted twice. So what you're seeing is not the initial plan submittal, but it's been changed, you know, quite significantly from what was originally submitted and it's much more in compliance with our codes than previously. The requested deviations are listed up on the screen and I will go through those. So the lot coverage is required to be no more than 80%. As you saw probably in the earlier memo that we initially issued and the CDC memo, they had originally requested an 82% lot coverage ratio. However, due to the recent plan resubmittal, which is actually in your packet and was posted online, they did eliminate six public parking stalls from the southerly entrance of the site down by commercial. And those were originally put in as public parking spaces. The idea was, hey, it's across from the park, you know, why not have some additional parking spaces available? However, they ended up being on the site rather than in the public right-of-way, right close to the park. The general public wouldn't even be aware they were there. There was only six stalls. They were, you know, needing additional green space for their lot coverage and, you know, there was an issue of trees. So what we decided was they would go ahead and eliminate those spaces. They've added green space, so now they are only requesting an 81% lot coverage rather than the 82, which is closer to the 80 because they were able to add this additional green space. The second deviation that they're requesting is for an 80-foot offset between the opposing driveway. So this driveway either needs to be aligned with what's across the street or offset at least 150 feet. They only are going to have an 80-foot offset. Now that is something that we see pretty consistently throughout the city, both on Irving Park Road and on Wooddale Road, especially when you're dealing with previously developed properties. The third one is materials. So the city code used to state that multifamily buildings needed to be at least 85% brick and stone and windows would be reduced out of that calculation. So you'd eliminate all the windows and then 85% of the remainder had to be brick or stone. The new UDO that was adopted in May said that 50% of the elevation needed to be brick and stone. And they are proposing 21% to 22%. That is, there's an actual photo material board that was included in your packet and that shows the materials that they're proposing to use. It is a mixture of materials and so they're requesting that deviation. For the parking lot islands, we have a minimum seven-foot wide requirement. Five of them don't meet that. So they are requesting a deviation for that. And the parking lot interior landscaping for a project of this size is supposed to be 8% of green space in the interior of the parking lot and they're only proposing 4%. So that's a summary of the deviations. Based on this project, its conformance to the comprehensive plan, it's kind of what the city was looking for when the TIF district was established. And really, they aren't requesting a lot of deviations or significant deviations from the code. The staff is comfortable recommending approval of this. We are suggesting a number of conditions. Those are on your screen. Nothing out of the ordinary, substantial conformance with the staff memo, final engineering approval. They did not provide us with sightline drawings of the rooftop units. So in the event that they are visible, they probably won't be, but this covers and makes it clear that if they are visible after construction, they do need to screen them in accordance with the UDO. The tree issue, I did want to touch on that just a little bit. So they are required, they had 195 trees on the site that they were going to remove. And of those, 140 of them were prohibited and in bad condition. And obviously, we don't want prohibited trees in the city. And so if you take all those out, that gives, that's 140 of the 195 trees. So you're left with about the remainder. Can I do 55? And then the code allows an administrative variation by the Community Development Director. We were comfortable with that 25% reduction as an administrative variation. So the actual number of trees that they are removing that need to be replaced is 39. So there's 39 trees that need to be replaced. However, based on the new UDO, which doubled the tree replacement requirements, they have to plant 195 two-inch trees. So, so three-inch trees. So they are replaced, they are required to replace the 39 trees with 195 three-inch trees. They are planting 95 on the site. Initially, they proposed around 50. After staff comments, they added in another 45. But unfortunately, based on the way the code reads, only 61 count as replacements. So due to that, even though 39 are required, 95 are, they're replacing on-site, they still owe us 134 trees. So they are requesting a deviation for that. We had talked with the developer about trees and had discussed with them possibly going above and beyond every, they've really covered every green space on the site with trees that perhaps they could, you know, donate some trees that could be used on public property. They did add three trees after the CDC meeting in this area where we eliminated the public parking spaces. So that's what that condition reads, that at the discretion of the city, the developer will provide up to 20 off-site streets, off-site trees on publicly-owned property. The last is that they have, they have a beautiful landscape plan. It's usually beautiful after it's planted, but they have an ongoing obligation, obviously, to maintain that landscaping going forward. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Mayor, please. Did they show any of the landscaping here tonight? Did I miss it?
You did not.
Is it in the packet? I was...
It is in the packet.
I mean, I see the building picture.
I did add it to the flash drive, so it is on the screen and we can, we'll just pull it up. Could you zoom in a little bit on the main portion, the northerly portion of the site?
I don't know. Is that in here?
So without having a color rendering, it looks like a lot of circles, but I'm happy This is not the updated landscape. Is it? Yes. Yes, okay.
I mean, so similar to the elevations, probably show it better than what we're looking at right there.
So the larger circles each constitute a shade tree. And obviously, when they're planted, they're a little bit smaller, but the circle generally usually represents when it's grown out and you don't want them growing into each other. They won't survive. So as you can see, they've heavily planted the property lines with as many trees as they could get in there.
Alderman Jacob?
A question, where they have all the trees along the police department side by the wall, are those going to be touching the wall or is there plenty of room in between?
I might defer to the landscape architect on the developer's team to answer that.
I think we're... So I'm going to introduce Dan from Upland Design. He's the landscape architect and he can answer all the tree questions. Thank you, Brad. Can you repeat the question, please?
So the trees on the north side of the, they're kind of against where we just put the police station?
Yes.
Then closed, they're kind of next to it. And I'm just asking, is there plenty of room there?
There's about 20 to 15 to 20 feet there and the grand, the trees will grow up to be that tall, but usually they can be framed up a little bit so they're not going to coincide with the wall. And there should be plenty of room for those to develop perfectly fine and not be interfering with that wall at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, please. So with the islands, you said five of them are going to be less than, how many islands are there? Like 10? So half the islands? And I think I read from seven feet there, some are going to be four or six, right?
Correct.
Five.
No, no, but five are...
There's five islands that are going to be a little bit less than seven feet.
How many islands on the whole plan?
I think there was about 12, 10 or 12.
Okay, so less than half. That's what I thought. And the other thing with the islands, when you look through the whole plan, where they have to supply the underground detention, where those vaults are going to go, are right around where those islands are at. So even if we got them wider, we couldn't plant in them because you'd be planting on top of a concrete vault. Right. A bunch of those things just kind of worked themselves out, I think, in the design as they were going through it. Alderwoman Ames?
So with the underground vaults, can you just explain a little bit more about that with flooding for any residents who live behind this, who would be concerned about, you know, drainage, that, just what that is exactly?
I am going to defer to their engineer. So basically, it's a large pit under the, under the ground. So it will accommodate up to a certain amount of storage. I'm sure it coincides with some type of rain period. And it will be required to be designed in accordance with the DuPage County Stormwater Ordinance. We have developed, they have developed preliminary engineering drawings to the extent where the city's consulting engineer, Chris Burke Engineering, is comfortable that it can be done. They just need the details to be flushed out during building permit stage, showing how it would be constructed. But you can go ahead and answer.
I can try, but I'm not a civil engineer and I am sorry I didn't bring my civil engineer to the meeting tonight because we were at the CDC, there were no civil engineering questions that came up. I do know that the previous developer was looking for some deviations when it comes to stormwater management. It was made very clear to me from day one, when I had my initial meeting with staff, that stormwater management was a hot topic. And I said, "Don't worry, we will meet all of the requirements." And we have, we're not asking for any deviations. With regards to the underwater detention areas, we have them in Wheeling as well. It is, you know, you only see it when the property is initially under construction. It's part of the initial infrastructure. And it is what it sounds like. It's a, you know, it's a large tank in the event of some sort of a stormwater, you know, event to prevent flooding and draining. Craig, is there anything that we need to add to this in regards to, to help address some of your questions? Craig is from KTTY, the architect, and he's much more knowledgeable than me.
Not an engineer, but played one on TV. So, you know, the stormwater ordinance is set up, so based on the amount of impervious surface we have in the lot, we collect a certain amount of water. And the ordinance controls the amount of water that we need to detain on-site and release at a specific rate back into the normal flow, whether that's underground storm or overland or whatever. So we've worked with, and Christopher Burke has reviewed, all of our underground detention. That really is, is a collection of the entire collection system. So we quantify the capacity of the inlets, the pipes, and then we have large storage systems below the parking lot that collect that water. So, you know, the first major portion of a storm event gets collected and then it gets released, you know, like through a two-inch or a four-inch pipe. So it's really restricted and it's retained on-site, released at a specific rate into the overall system. So and the reason for that is we're not deluging your existing storm system with the collection of all this water immediately. It's released over time. So.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. So then with the, can you just show where those underground storage units would be on the map?
Yeah, so there's one large one up here and then there's another one which is not actually shown on this plan along here.
Further down.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
I just, I'm asking just on behalf of the people who live behind here too. So then when it rains, you'll have storm drains within the parking lot, collecting the water from this parking lot and not putting it back into the neighborhood behind here, correct?
We're restricted by ordinance to basically collect all of the water that falls on our site. It has to be collected on our site. It can't surface drain onto the neighbor's property and we can't collect the parking lot and shed it to the west, you know, into the park district. We have to curb that surface. We collect it underground and we direct it to specific outlet locations that connect to the city storm sewer system.
Okay, that's great. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to cause any additional...
And if I could just elaborate on that. So what we are proposing is an improvement to the existing conditions and it's a very expensive process. It's like over a million dollars. So whatever is being experienced now is going to improve after we put these underground tanks in, if that helps alleviate any concerns.
It sounds wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
That really did sum up. Right now, there's nothing there.
Right.
The water is leaking the sides through drives and overland process through the back and into the park and over by the police station. As they stated under DuPage County Stormwater Ordinance, they're not allowed to allow one drop of water to leave the site. So they collect all the water, hold it and then release it at a slower rate. So it should improve everything around there substantially compared to what it is now.
Right. And I'm asking because the people behind this who have had... Right, and I, I'm asking because the people behind us, who have had flooding issues from the creep, from the other direction, are thinking now it's gonna cause from this way, so, thank you, that's a great, great plan.
Alderman Jacob?
I have, uh, two questions. One's kind of a business question, I, I mean, we had a condo building go up in town, and it took forever to fill up, and I'm sure you guys did your homework, because you're gonna be owning the property, but seeing that studios are like fourteen hundred, and one bedrooms are sixteen hundred, do you feel you're gonna have any issue renting the studios?
Uh, no, based on the, um, uh, market study, um, and the feasibility report, uh, there's a lack of studios, um, in the area, which is, um, why, um, the studio count is where it's at from a percentage standpoint. Um, and I've also seen firsthand that, um, we didn't build enough studios at the one-wheeling apartment, um, and even my last project that I did in the city of Chicago, which I know is not a fair comparison, same thing, studios are always the first units to rent, um, because it gets people in the building at a low price point, and they just want to utilize all the amenities, um, and the, the two bedrooms are the last ones to get rented. Ironically enough, um, the studios are always the short-term renters, and the two bedrooms are the long-term renters, uh, but in the end, it all, it all works out.
Okay.
Alderman Jacob?
And just a final question, on the roof, is there gonna be any green space on the roof for the residents, or no?
Uh, no, no, we're gonna do solar, uh, panels on the rooftop.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, going back to the flooding, um, the collection, i- is there gonna be a lift station there, is it gonna be just sort of force main the water, house the water?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
I'm sorry, going back to the flooding, to the, the collection, so, once the water's collected inside the, um, the collection, uh, chambers, is there gonna be a lift station to get the water out, or is it just for...
A what station?
A lift station.
Oh, oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, right, right, so it's gonna go by gravity, then? Okay. And then, I have another question.
Sure, go ahead.
Is this like, what, a fifty million dollar project?
Uh, sixty.
Sixty million, okay, and how much is the city gonna collect as far as, uh, property taxes on this building?
I think we are estimating the property taxes at around seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
Um, uh, it's, it's somewhere around there, I can get you an exact figure, but it's, you know, it's all based on, you know, the assessor and whatnot, so.
And, um, so as soon as this is passed, how, how soon is this, uh, gonna be demoed?
Um, actually, we are... We, uh, the existing bank building?
Yes, yes.
Uh, we're actually in discussions with the city, um, to, um...
Oh, we're gonna be doing the demo, right, right.
Demo the site and, um, add that on to the acquisition of the, uh, property.
Right. Okay. And, um, will there be a sign up, a big sign shown?
And we are also in the process of, um, talking about putting up a, a sign, uh, for the, so I've been working with Stacy on that, so.
Okay, thank you.
She's, she's one step ahead of everybody.
Thanks.
Mayor, please.
A couple comments, real quick, the seven hundred and fifty thousand in real estate taxes, that is not all the city's, so for the residents that are listening, the city does not get seven hundred and fifty thousand a year, that's split up between all the taxing bodies, we only get our percentage.
And how much would that be for the city?
It's about seven percent, whatever that comes out.
Still a big amount?
Yeah, but, just wanna make sure people don't get the idea where... Uh, my question is, I'm looking at the materials and whatnot, and I saw a lot of fiber cement, and you got a couple of diff, are those just like, what, panels, or...
Yeah, that's exactly what they are.
So it's basically a masonry-type finish?
Yes.
Okay.
Alderman Messina? Is it masonry or stucco? It's a cement, okay.
Yeah, fi- fiber cement, yeah.
Fiber cement.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Alderman Jacob?
Uh, from, from your original project, and actually, I like this better, but wasn't the original building gonna be a lot closer to the street, it looks like from the drawing, this'll be a little, what? No, no, well, from their project, when they originally proposed it, there was a... No, no, I know that, but there, weren't you guys, you, they were gonna have a circular driveway, wasn't the original building that you...
The code did not allow for that.
Oh, it did not, okay. I mean, I like it further away, but I re, I kinda remember the drawing of the original building, you guys with the circular drive, closer to the street.
No more questions, except I have a few.
Of course.
Um, I'm gonna go to, they have to do with the elevation and, uh, material selections, and, uh, just some concern, I kinda went through the building, uh, I'm not overly concerned with the percentage of brick, uh, you know, the twenty-one percent instead of the fifty percent, 'cause I think the cement panels probably just as good, or at least, uh, in the spirit of, of what we're doing, but my concern was more with the, the vertical tower elements, we'll call them, where all the, uh, balconies are connected.
Okay.
Those, uh, are all done in, uh, EFS, so my, my concern is that with all the penetrations, with the chain supports and the brackets holding the, doesn't that up the ante on, uh, a greater ability of water penetration with, with all those points? I mean, you, in some respects, you're almost asking for some trouble with that material.
I, I can let Craig, uh, address that.
Um, balcony's balcony, penetration's penetration, um, you know, the, the constructability and the method we put the drawings together is, we seal that penetration when the blade that the balcony attaches to, um, is secured to the wall of the building, and it's basically behind the finished surf, finished surface material, uh, and it's in conjunction with the weather barrier that we've, we're provided to put on the exterior of the building by code. So, the details are, are completed such that, you know, we provide an anchor point for the finished material to bolt to outside of the fiber cement, the brick, uh, the stucco, whatever that finish is, um, so that when it's put on the building, it's made weather tight. And then the connection or the, a- anytime there's dissimilar materials, uh, whether you're changing from brick to fiber cement, or brick to metal panel, that joint is caulked also. So, um, there's provisions in the drawings and the details that make the connections for those elements weather tight, so, um, you know, the connection of the turnbuckle and the support rods, as well as the balcony frame itself, those connections are all outside the building.
Well, that's good to hear. I didn't have the details, so I couldn't, and I've, I...
I didn't have the details either.
And, and I've seen it where it wasn't done that way, so that was my concern, so...
Yes.
Good to hear. Uh, the next, uh, the material for the, the decks themselves, the balconies, is that a wood product, a composite product?
Metal.
Metal?
Yeah. They're, uh, they're pre-bad, um, they're actually manufactured, the, the last ones we did were using, making straight, oh, sorry, came, uh, uh, came straight from, uh, Wisconsin, I actually went up to, uh, visit the, uh, facility. Um, uh, we, we haven't had any issues with our, with our balconies, um, at one-wheeling, and, um, I'm pretty sure we'll go with a very similar product, if not from the same, uh, provider.
Then the, uh, one of the other questions, so the heating and cooling of the units, is that gonna be split packs, is that a through-the-wall unit?
Uh, we will probably go with some sort of a, uh, VTEC, um, system, uh, individual units will all have their own individual HVAC system, so if you wanna pump the air in the winter, go for it, if you wanna pump the heat in the summertime, you control your own air, um, vent it out, out the side, and then easily accessible from inside the unit for, like, you know, filter replacement and whatnot.
So I was just asking because none of those details are shown in the rendering, and so I was just wondering.
Uh, yeah, we're, we, we will, well, maybe, maybe not in this rendering, but I think on the elevations, the vents are shown on the elevations.
I don't think they're shown on the ones I had, but just, I just wanted to clarify.
It does look very clean, too clean, almost.
So, uh, well, it's... Well, then, I was wondering, what was the system gonna be, is it gonna be the, so...
Yeah, and you know, and, and I, uh, I, I, I was actually told to eliminate a lot of the slides showing pictures of, uh, the apartment building at one-wheeling, but if you do see the facade, um, you can, you could see closely that there are vents, but what we do is, we paint them to match the material, um, or it's with, um, you know, copper, um, uh, what's, it's aluminum, or what's the...
The lube's are usually, aluminum are usually finishing those to match the adjacent material, so they're hard, hard on that.
Yeah, so they don't, they really don't stick out, and, um, I'd, I'd be happy to show you some, um, pictures of what it looks like, what the finished product looks like with those.
I went to wheeling, so I, I looked at, I just was wondering, 'cause there was the detail showing that...
So, yeah, so it's that same, it's that, it would be the same one.
So they're gonna be painted to match whatever the...
Yes.
Adjacent substrate is, whether it's white or the other colors.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, just on a topic, maybe you can fill us in, so, are we talking like a split duct that you see like in Europe on the wall, or are we talking about the P-TAC, which is like the ones in a motel room?
No, it's, it's actually, um, it's more like a traditional furnace, it's vertical, it, it's in a space that's about thirty inches square, um, V-TACs are, they get their air directly from the outside, and they distribute directly into the room at the exterior wall, which is where your heat loss and heat gain is most, uh, contributed to the unit, so it's right at the location that it's needed, it, it does a couple of things, it, it eliminates the need for duct work and soffits throughout the unit, where we have a, a fan coil unit, uh, or a furnace buried on the inside of the unit, we need the duct all the way out to the window, which is where the heat loss is. So, this moves the units out to the outside, and they stack vertically through the building, so it's very efficient, uh, more cost effective.
So usually right next to the, um, the exterior, uh, where the, where the balconies are, um, located in the family room, great room, whatever you wanna call it, yeah.
They'll split the wall between the living room and the bedroom, so right below both directions.
Okay. Never heard of it, but it sounds great, okay? Thank you.
And, and listen, they're always making improvements to those units, so they're becoming more energy efficient, um, you know, so the ones that we put in the apartment building and wheeling, I'm sure have been improved upon, um, you know, and so we're always, like I said, you know, looking to get LEED certified, Energy Star certified, and choose the units that make the most sense.
Okay.
Alderman Curialy?
Yes, hi, uh, you mentioned being a dog-friendly building, did you have...
Yes.
Uh, designated walk areas, for runs?
Uh, we, we don't here, um, uh, and we actually didn't in wheeling as well, because there's so much, um, you know, surrounding, um, area that is, um, friendly, um, you know, for, um, owners to take their dogs out for a walk, um, and so we look at the, uh, surrounding site conditions, um, and we feel that, uh, it's not necessary to have that designated area, um, but we will have a dog washing station, um, at the entrance, so after, um, tenants, uh, take their dog for a walk, if they wanna like wash their paws or something, get the mud off, uh, we do offer that.
One other question?
Oh.
Uh, it's a different question, there's a number of power poles on Wooddale Road in front of the building, uh, do they interfere with your driveway, are you gonna...
Uh, those are gonna be buried.
Okay, good. That's it.
So, one, uh, we, we've covered kind of the, the building, the looks, the facade, you've taken care of the water, and we're back to the last question, uh, which was asked at the CDC, and that was about the trees, and I know it's a big sticking thing, trees and water and Wooddale, uh, and I know that you kindly said that you would provide twenty extra off-site trees, or at least the money for the city to plant them, uh, the CDC had asked for more, so, at, at this time, I'm, I'm asking if you guys would reconsider if, the, instead of the twenty, to give us forty trees.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? There being none, I'll make a motion to move...
Alderman Jacob's got a question.
No, go ahead.
Sure. I'll make a motion to move recommend approval for special use for multiple tenant dwelling building and planned unit development, consistent with the concept and final development plans, site plans, and lock consolidation for the property located at three seventy-two North Wooddale Road, Wooddale, Illinois, conditioned on the following, final engineering approval, developer providing screening of rooftop units, developer providing forty off-site trees on the publicly owned property, developer maintaining the landscaping on the site in accordance with the approved landscape plan, that is my most...
Second.
So are there any further questions?
Sorry.
If not, uh, Alderman Jacob?
Ju- just a comment, unfortunately, next week I will be thirty thousand feet, uh, in the air coming home from a, a business conference, so I will not be able to make the meeting, but I do wanna know I'm in a hundred percent support, and if you guys could have it done by June of twenty-three, I'd be even happier, but, thank you.
Sounds like bad planning on your part, you should've been here.
Roll call.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Curialy?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you.
Uh, next, items to be considered at future meetings, UDO amendments, November tenth, building code amendments, November tenth, data center route eighty-three, January, Moreno's redevelopment, winter twenty-three, is there anything anybody else would like to add? There being none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, or adjourned?
I'd like to call the Order of Finance and Administration Committee, um, I'm gonna take, take note that the same council members are present, and I need a, a proof of the minutes for, uh, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections to the minutes? If they are not, if they are none, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, report and recommendation, approval of a purchase agreement between the city of Wooddale and AVI Systems, Inc., for the city council AV system project at city hall in the amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars, and no sense, that is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Mayor, go ahead.
Uh, just a simple one, so I know we're getting this money reimbursed right from Comcast, AT&amp;T?
Yeah, the peg, uh, pass-through fee, yes.
How long does it take to get, I don't recall exactly how much money we get per year?
I talked to Finance Director Wilson, uh, earlier this week, he indicated somewhere between ten and fifteen thousand a year, which we've been accumulating.
That's what I figured, okay.
Any other questions? If they are none, roll call, please.
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah. Roll, okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Curialy?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is the items to consider at future meetings, uh, letter of credit direction, that's coming up November tenth, and, uh, audit report coming up either in November or December, and the CIP, uh, coming up January twelfth, and fiscal year ending budget two thousand and twenty-four coming up February twenty-third. Any other items to consider? If they are none, uh, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or adjourned, thank you.